And welcome back inside the Appalachian Theater. I am David Jackson along with Omar Tomlinson, and we are coming down the home stretch. Last but certainly not least, we're about to get into our candidate session for the Watauga County Board of Education. As we are going through the process right now of transforming and disinfecting the room, it does give us an opportunity to give you a bit of a reset here and look at the candidates for the Board of Education race. Of course, we have one incumbent, that's Steve Combs. We have two longtime members of the Board of Education moving on from their board seats this year. Marshall Ashcraft, Jason Cornett, and Ronnie Holste round out the group of challengers and those that are vying for the seats on the Board of Education. As we give you those names, we also want to make sure that you are again familiar with the rules. If you have been sitting with us since the start, first of all, good for you. Secondly, I think you probably get the gist of what I'm about to say, but let's go over it for anybody that might just be tuning in. This is how we're handling the format tonight. Questions will be asked of each candidate in a round robin format, each having the opportunity to answer a question. First, all of them will answer the same question. All questions will be asked by one of us moderators here, and each response will have a 90-second time limit, and each candidate will have a two-minute opening and closing statement. So again, you'll get the opportunity to hear everybody address one of our topics first, and again, you'll also hear their opening and closing remarks about their candidacy here as well. So again, it's been a long evening. We got started at 5:30. It's coming up on 9 o'clock now. We do apologize for being a little bit late. Sometimes politicians have things they want to say, and we want to give them the opportunity to say that because we want to make sure that you, the local citizens of this area, hear from those leaders directly about what their plans are for how they will take office potentially and impact our region and our local communities. So with that said, our candidates are coming forward. Omar, you've been involved in a lot of these things. I think, again, it is certainly in these political times, I appreciate the fact that people are willing to put their name on a ballot. That is an awfully big ask in these times.
Takes a lot of courage, and as we had one of the county commissioner candidates say, you didn't realize how many forms you had to fill out, what time periods were involved, and what things they had to do in order just to be part of the primaries situation. So let's take a look at our candidates. First of all, is the lone incumbent, it is Steve Combs, and at a glance, he's a 14-year member of the Watauga County Board of Education. He has served 32 years as an employee of the Boone ABC Board and has a long history in the agriculture industry. Next up is Marshall Ashcraft, and he is 13 years serving on the staff of Watauga County Schools, former member of the Boone Town Council, and he served as Executive Director of the Children's Council for four years.
Next, we have Jason Cornett. He actually served on the Watauga County Board of Education from 2014 to 2018, 21 years in law enforcement throughout his career. He's a native of the Bethel community and a Watauga High School graduate. And last but not least, of course, we have Mr. Ronnie Holste here joining us today. Ronnie, again, another person that doesn't need much introduction here in our area, a longtime resident of the area, a faculty member of Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute on their Watauga campus. He studied criminal justice at Appalachian State, and again, his wife Gina was the 2013 Watauga County Schools Teacher of the Year. So some experience in the Holste household with education certainly. So we welcome all of you. Thank you for waiting it out with us. These other politicians, they jabber all the time. But we are certainly glad to have you all here. We want to give you that opportunity for the two-minute opening comment. So Mr. Combs, we will start with you. Welcome, and thank you for joining us.
Yes, I appreciate being here, having the opportunity to be, but before everyone and I, I thank the Chamber for hosting this event and all the other media people. Like you said, I have been on the school board for 14 years, and I'm going to tell you, this has been the toughest year I've ever had in education. With COVID-19, it's not been really, really good for us because most of our attention has been on COVID-19. But moving forward, like you said, I've lived in the county my whole life. In fact, I live in the house I was born in, in 1965, and my mom and dad passed it down to me. I have two wonderful daughters, a Victorian scholar and my wife, and she's here tonight. I've been at the ABC store, like you said earlier, for 32 years, but one of my really passions is the fact that I have been able to be in education, be a part of the board, and do so many wonderful things over the years for the kids of this county.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Mr. Ashcraft, welcome.
Thank you. Whichever you has a mute button.
We'll use it.
I want to join Steve in thanking the Chamber and all of those who have played a role in trying to make this possible. I think having it informed public is obviously one of the keystones of a functioning democracy, and it's harder than ever to do that, so I appreciate your extra effort in making that happen tonight. I'm running for this position because I have a deep appreciation for the importance of public education and because I want to contribute to the work of the outstanding professionals in our system. My daughter completed her K-12 education here in the Watauga County Schools. I worked in the school system, as has been mentioned, for a little over 13 years, and I'm committed to the continued improvement of this excellent system. Some of the core principles that I hope to carry into the office should I be elected are as follows. First, as I believe a strong system of public education remains an essential component of American democracy, not least because it is the fundamental starting point for providing a more equal educational opportunity and economic opportunity for all of our children. We must bear this in mind in all that we do. Second, all of our decisions must be made on the basis of what is best for the student. In making that judgment, the most valuable guidance we will receive will come from our professional educators. I am committed to respecting that expertise and supporting their work. Third, while the work of our schools necessarily focuses largely on academic proficiency and career preparation, education does not end there. Students also need social and emotional skills to enable them to take full advantage of the knowledge and abilities they acquire, and they need arts education and other courses to help round out their experience. The schools therefore need and deserve our support for educating the whole child. Fourth and last, the Board of Education is responsible for ensuring accountability for the effective and efficient use of public funds. To maintain and strengthen support for public education, we must be above reproach, both in how we make decisions and in how we use those funds to improve education. I have experience in public education as a student, as a parent of a student, and as a school system employee, and I am grateful for that, and it's been a privilege. I would also be grateful and honored to have your support and to serve our schools and our county as a member of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashcraft. Mr. Cornett.
Omar, David, thank you so much for having us all out tonight. I know it's getting later, but I do appreciate the opportunity. For those at home that are listening in, I appreciate you hanging in there and waiting to listen to us, and I want to say I appreciate all of our educators, all in our school system that are facing everything that they have. Like was mentioned before, just got a little bit in my introduction, I am a Watauga County native, lived here my whole life, married to Brandy. She and I both worked for Appalachian State. Our son, he started out at Appalachian, and due to his classes and courses going online, we did opt to go to Caldwell, which has been a good thing there, so we're seeing firsthand exactly what is going on with the virus and how it's affecting our school systems. One of the things I just wanted to mention as well is my dedication to school safety. Again, no surprises there, being a police officer and what I've done in recent years. Since leaving the board in 2018, one of the things that I've really committed myself to is working with threat assessment, the Behavioral Threat Assessment Team with the SBI, working more with intelligence, pretty much tailored to the school system, the college or university school system, working with the other 16 schools in our system across the state. So it's been a really good learning experience, but I can actually bring that experience to the board as well. I also serve on the staff senate at Appalachian State, so I believe it's very important to be involved, not just in our local community, but where we work as well. So I'm thankful to be here tonight, and it's good to see each of you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cornett. Mr. Holste.
Yes, thank you so much for having us. I thank Boone, I thank Blowing Rock for actually offering this opportunity for the Board of Education members and candidates to be able to voice our opinion. This is an extremely important position that we're vying for. I mean, the education system in Watauga County is wonderful, and it promotes economic development. It promotes, you know, development of our youth and children who will be our future and are our future right now. So it's the most important, I think, of any position in which we could be asking to be serving for. So what do I stand for? And, you know, to some people, I'm new; to others, I'm not. I am a Caldwell Community College instructor, but I have served students for nearly 20 years. And I started it back in 1999 when I worked with the homeless population for three years in Seattle, Washington. They were all youth. They all came from varying different ways of life. But then I came to Watauga County and started serving with Western Youth Network so that I could serve in the substance abuse prevention, so that we could work in the school systems and help to do all that we can to hopefully thwart a major problem in which we have. So the public schools are an extremely important part of Watauga County, and we have a fabulous school board right now. And so one of the things that I want to consider is to think about, you know, I like to call it the AT&amp;T approach. I want to be accessible. A school board member must be accessible to all people, and I think that that includes families and students and teachers and faculty and staff. I also think that we should be transparent as a school board. I think transparency is critical to make sure that all family members know, especially in the time when we're creating all these protocols and everything else in which we are putting forth. And also, the last thing is technology. How can we, as a school system, support technology in our schools? So anyway, my name again is Ronnie Holste, and I'm asking your vote this November.
Thank you very much. Real quick, before we let Omar start, the first question, I would be remiss if I didn't explain what Tracy's doing over here. She's throwing all these hand gestures at you here. She's cheering for you, she's telling you to stop, all this stuff. So let me explain what they are. The closed hand means you've got about 30 seconds left. The open hand means you've got 10 seconds left. Wrap it up, and she will yell at you if you go overtime. So thank you, Tracy, for doing all this tonight. She has been a great traffic cop for us here this evening. So Omar, take it away.
I was just thinking, this is all about education, and the fact that we are on TV right now on APP TV, which is an educational program that is made up of students who will then take this and actually look at the tape, evaluate, and learn from it so that they can provide an opportunity and experience and maybe get into this as professionals. And to have their work being shown on Spectrum and on Sky Best, I wanted to congratulate them in particular as well. We've asked the same question, starting off each one, and basically it applies to you as well. What does public education look like in Watauga County post-COVID-19? We'll start with Mr. Combs.
Education in Watauga County right now, our first goal right now is to make sure that every kid in this county is safe, and we don't want to go back to school until we are sure that every kid is going to be safe. We have updates each and every day from Ms. Green, from the health lady, we call her. We get updates every day from her about what the numbers look like in Watauga County. We know right now that the biggest group that is growing in is the 18- to 24-year-old group. We are getting ready to send our kids back on October the 5th, our K-3 kids, but we want to be able to get our other kids back too. It's kind of like me and Dr. Elliott was talking the other day. We've got to get our kids back in school. We know that we're behind right now, especially in the K-3 area, because these kids, that's where they get their ground floor running, that's where they get their basics. And so we're trying our very, very, very best to get these kids back in school.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you. In terms of what will look like after COVID, I think one key element is going to be restoring a sense of safety, normalcy, and rhythm to the school and for families that participate in the school system. We obviously have seen both the great capacity and the limitations of instructional technology. At the very outset, I think there'll be some work to get everybody used to the change in relationships. It's obviously different in person than it is online. But as part of that, I hope that we'll use this opportunity to advocate for better technology access for students at home who don't have that. That's been one shortcoming under the current arrangements. That's not something we can control directly by ourselves. We've enlisted partners, the school system has spent money to make it available to people, but there are parts of the county which can't get the service, period, and there are people in the county who could get the service but cannot afford it. So we really need to address that problem because not only are we very much relying on technology now, we're going to need even going forward to make sure that everybody gets equal access.
Mr. Cornett.
Very good question, and I think it really is going to come down to how comfortable people are with returning, also hopefully a vaccination being soon as well. And that is something that my wife and I had talked about. Our son's 18, again, he's taking college courses. He was conditioned through his senior year at Watauga, taking online courses. So when he moved to online, again, if you will, for his first semester of college, it was kind of second nature to him. He didn't really want to do that, but it was kind of second nature. But Brandy and I were talking, she just looked at me the other night, she said, "Jason, how would we have done this if we had a third grader, fourth grader, trying to learn how to read online? How are you going to do that?" So as important as it has been and is to move things incrementally, it is time to try to start moving forward. And I think that may look at, for some of our older students, maybe some online options with the virtual academy, just as things move forward. I know, as well, I talked to Dr. Elliott the other day, and I said, you know, pastoring a church and you running the school system has had some commonality to it because you have a group of people, maybe half that are ready to go back, half that are not. But I think using common sense, using what we're learning from our medical professionals, and just testing it, just being real careful, real safe, moving forward with common sense, and if we have to pull back, we have to pull back. There's nothing wrong with that. You just incrementally do it as we can, but absolutely putting the safety of our faculty, staff, and our teachers at the forefront.
Mr. Holste.
So the question of what schools will look like and what it looks like now. As a parent, I have an eight-year-old and a three-year-old. They both attend Valley Crusus School. They are doing virtual. They are fortunate in that the schools have a great model program within the childcare system. But I will tell you, there's great anxiety with going back to school, within either parents and what that looks like for many parents, but there's also a sense of necessity that we have to get back to some form of normalcy, if you will. So when I think about the schools, I think about just understanding and trying to put myself in the positions of both parent and my wife being a teacher, as a teacher. I see that there is some great anxiety, but we have to step over a hurdle, if you will. But we have to do it correctly, you know, based on the public health and the experts, which I know Ms. Green has come in and spoke to the board many times, and they are almost on speed dial, from what I understand, with each other. So the idea is, I recognize that the schools are going to be a little bit different, but we know what to do. We know what it is to be safe in schools, and that means that we're going to have to do distancing, and we're going to have to do the washing hands, we're going to have to wear the mask and so forth, for now, for now.
Our next question, kind of, we'll step back nostalgic here for a second and honor two very experienced members of the Board of Education that will be transitioning away from their leadership roles during this election. What do you feel that you bring to the Board of Education to help fill those soon-to-be voids of not only the leadership aspect, but the institutional memory of the Watauga County school system overall? Mr. Ashcraft, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. Those two folks, I've seen them work in the board and in the school system and other capacities for many years, and it's sort of a cliche, but they are in a genuine sense irreplaceable. Both their institutional knowledge, their commitment to education, the degree to which they care for children, those are big shoes to fill, and I'm not going to be able to step in and make the kind of contribution and impact they have right away. However, I think with that experience being lost, I will be incumbent on those of us who are serving to do the best we can to get up to speed on any current issues. Some have served recently on the board, or Steve, of course, is currently a member, and he'll have a good grip on that already. But I think making sure that we're positioned to make a contribution, to understand the issues, and to listen. We've got to listen to people, both as parents and as employees, and make sure that we're taking into account their needs and their interests in all the decisions that we make.
Mr. Cornett.
Yeah, actually, Dr. Childers was my first principal, and Mr. Henry's was my second principal, and I didn't meet Ms. Reese until sitting beside her on the school board for those four years, and I learned a lot from her as well, just a good calming presence, just like Mr. Ashcraft was saying, just very knowledgeable. They know it. That's their craft, that's their knowledge base, and losing the two of them, that's a blow to the system, it really is. But that being said, I really tried to take notes and learn from them, learn from their consistency, and learn from their common sense, just very approachable people, people that you could learn from and be comfortable with. And that's one of the things that I myself try to be and want to be, being that I actually went through the school system. Again, Mr. Childers at first, I remember being called into his office, and I've loved revisiting some of that with him. I have to say this, at a board meeting one time, they were talking about dancing with your principal, and I said, "Mr. Childers, you remember that?" And I said, "But I think you had a paddle in your hand when we were dancing." And he said, "No, Jason, you know I wouldn't paddle you. You got to know Dr. Childers to understand that." But just very, it feels like home. And thinking about those two not being there, if elected back on the board, I've really put a lot of thought into that. It will be different, but it's one of those, just again, like Mr. Ashcraft has said, it's shoes that you can't fill, but you really want to be a contributing factor, you really want to contribute, you really want to give back, and I appreciate the time that I got to have with them, wonderful folks to work with.
Mr. Holste.
Well, it's a wonderful thing and a terrible thing at the same time, but it's wonderful that we can learn, you know, from them and what they have gone through and all the time that they've spent in this system. And I've gotten to know Mr. Henry's and Mr. Childers over the years, and they are two of the most wonderful people. But also, Ms. Reese, she has put a place in my wife's heart because she has treated Gina as a wonderful person. Every time she meets her, she always remembers her name, she always, you know, every teacher I think she's ever come into contact with, she knows their name, and that is something to emulate, right? With Ms. Reese being able to say that she knows who these teachers are, and she understands where they're coming from, and also to be able to look at students and, you know, just with the poise in which they do it, and they will be missed. It's a terrible thing, but it's so wonderful to be able to have seen them do that, and my wife was a teacher and is a teacher for so long, and to learn from that and to see her do that. And I can only hope to be even close remotely that accessible for the students and the families and the people of Watauga County as those people have been. And the teachers and the faculty and all the staff and administrators of Watauga County look up to them, and I think they have a right to, and I hope I can only do the same.
Mr. Combs.
That's a great question. We're not going to be able to fill their shoes, but it brings me back to when I was on the board, the very first year I was on the board, back in 2000. We had Andy Reese on there, and Andy Reese was a mentor to me. He taught me how to be a school board member. I was green, didn't know how to be a school board member. One day, he called me over to the side, me and him sat down, and we had a long talk. He said, "Steve," he says, "you're green, you don't know much about being on the school board yet." He said, "Let me fill you with a little wisdom." He said, "Number one," he said, "school board works as a team." He said, "We all are no better than the one besides," but he said, "What makes us work so good is we're a team." He says, "And we talk to each other, we communicate with each other." And he said, "Not only that, but we have to realize that this school board cannot make all the answers and not solve all the problems for the county." And I thought, "That's why I was elected." He said, "No." He said, "It takes parents too." He says, "It takes teachers, it takes cafeteria workers, it takes bus drivers, it takes everybody in the whole school system working together to make this school system what it is now and what it will be."
All right, this time, Mr. Cornett will start off, and, you know, being on the board, you kind of control the checkbook for the schools. And so the question is, what do you view as the system's top funding priorities over the next two to four years?
Very good question, and absolutely, the building of the new Valley Crusus School is right there at the top. We've got to move forward with completing that project. Again, meeting with Dr. Elliott, that's one of the things that was expressed right out of the gate, and I understand that we've got to move forward with that, but also at the same time, not neglecting the other facilities in the district. There's a lot of other projects that have been ongoing. I remember so many times meeting with the Facilities Committee and all the things that we were looking at, at all the other schools in the district, and those things, the hardest part about it is, the longer you go, the more expensive it gets, and we have to be really good at being good stewards and moving forward and doing as much as we can as soon as we can, but not getting in too deep. But I think right at the forefront, we've got to be looking at getting the completion of Valley Crusus School completed, then also on the heels of that, we're looking at Harden Park as well, a very high-traffic, a large elementary school as well that takes in a lot of students and it has a lot of traffic. And so it's a progress or a process that we're going to have to just meet and just hit it head-on and go with it.
Mr. Holste.
Well, definitely infrastructure when it comes to the local schools and the starting of the Valley Crusus School, which I'm especially excited about with both of my kids going to school there. So also knowing that there's a lot of other infrastructure that's needed in our county, that's always going to take top priority for any board. I also look at priorities that we should be looking at as well, which is mental health and healthcare within our schools and making sure that our students and all those are kept safe. I know that we're working toward, and if we haven't got there yet, we hope to have a nurse in every school. I think it's also a priority that we have better mental healthcare for students and perhaps even families, if we can find county-wide, if we could see that. That's also of high priority, whether it be social workers or clinicians, but primarily someone who can be there to support the guidance counselors and other people like that. Also, I look at the security of our schools, and they have taken great strides in the past few years to be able to make every school secure, but I think there's always things that we could be working on and making sure that the security of those schools are there. And I think the last and most important is making sure that those who are in the schools, whether it be the teachers and the staff, all the people who work in the cafeteria or janitors, feel like they've got financially secure. Last, but not least, is universal pre-K. If there's any funding there, we should be pushing for that as well.
Mr. R.
Our first priority should be getting these kids back in school in a safe manner. Our number-two priority should be the fact that we need to be able to work on this Valley Crusus new school that I've already been working on too, but we need to be able to do this and fund it in a good way where it's not going to cost taxpayers a ton of money. We also need to work with our state and local officials on this to be able to gain money. Something else that's really, really important to me is, we need to be able to hire an SRO officer for every school. The safety of our kids are the most important thing. We live in a different world now, it's not like it was when before COVID came around, and our other priorities are the fact that normally we are, as a board, able to sit down and set goals. Through COVID-19, we've not, as a board, been able to get together and set goals for the future, and that's, to me, is one of the biggest priorities, is to be able to sit down as a board and say, "Where do we need to go from here? How are we going to go about improving our technology? How are we going to make our schools safe? Where are we going to get the money from?" That's what we need to be doing.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Only problem with growing glasses is that all the good answers have been taken, but I mostly agree with my fellow candidates up here. The capital program, and Dr. Elliott deserves a lot of credit for his work in trying to lay the foundation there, bringing the right kinds of people, to give us recommendations on that, and the relationships he's built, both with the county commissioners and other community groups, to try to build support for the school system to fund those improvements. We're not there yet, we're going to need more, but we're moving forward on Valley Crusus. We need to replace another school in the next five to 10 years. We need to make major investments in upgrades and renovations at most of the other schools. On the operating side, I think the most important and valuable investment we can make is in early childhood education. It may take the form of universal pre-K, as has been referenced already, but I also think that a lot needs to be done before children even get to school. That will not probably be done directly by the school system itself, but we need to be a voice for doing a lot more to invest in early childhood services so that when children get to school, they can take full advantage of what it has to offer.
Interesting segue, because that's what our next question is about here. How should... How should K through 12 and early childhood systems work together to ensure that students succeed as they transition successfully into those early grades? Mr. Holstein.
Okay. This is about early childhood education.
We're talking, I think, early childhood in this conversation goes from zero to pre-K.
Okay. I got you. We should be focused solely, when it comes programmatically, in helping all families have access to some level of pre-K education or even before. I know that, understanding that the ages anywhere between three and five are the most critical points of learning, and we have word gaps that exist. If we don't get students involved in either literature, talking to either someone else face-to-face, it could be a parent, of course, but it also, our fabulous daycares that we have in the area, but every child needs access to that because when children come to school, we recognize that that gap only widens as they are in school. Because some students know how to hold a book and read letters and operate certain things, and others don't. So the idea is making sure that we can get as many people into, and many students into the understanding of early pre-K or at least that early education, because it lays the groundwork for them over the next 12 years, right? And we understand that, you know, reading is something that happens from kindergarten to third grade, and that's a critical year, too. We know the state legislature's made budgets based on, you know, students passing that third-grade marker. But we must invest in those kids early. It's a prevention. The earlier we put money in, the more gains we reap later. And I think it's critical.
Mr. Combs.
Every kid needs to access to some kind of early pre-K. Over the years of being on the board, I've seen kids that had access to pre-K that did great. And I've seen kids that went to kindergarten, right straight into kindergarten, that didn't have any form of pre-K, that just only had been at home with moms and dads, and they struggled. So we need to make sure through investments, however it may be, that every kid has that opportunity so they can succeed in life.
Mr. Ashcraft.
I think we've got a consensus on the importance of early childhood education. As director of the Children's Council for four years, I got a pretty good acquaintance with, with some of these issues. And that gap in the way that children come to school, based on those very earliest years, is a real hindrance to getting kids to an equal start in school. We know that brain development in those first few years is absolutely critical. Just physically, as synapses are being grown and pruned out in that process, children need a certain kind of enriched environment to make the best use of their potential. You can do something to remediate it when they're in school, but it would be so much better if we could get them all started at the same level. A lot of families do not have the opportunity to provide high-quality childcare. A lot of parents haven't had the opportunity to get a complete education themselves and are unable to provide the support and enrichment that many of us take for granted. So we need to do a lot more to provide that kind of opportunity to all of our children so that all of our children can succeed.
Mr. Cornet.
Again, very good answers from each of the candidates, but access is a, is a biggie. Access right out of the gate for all families in our, in our district and being, feeling comfortable to be able to come and, and take part in the access, kind of like our infrastructure. We're talking about internet, not leaving anyone out just because they don't have maybe that one thing that they need, but us reaching out as a school system to each one. And I would see that potentially by way of orientation and say, "This is what this is for. Please come meet with us, and we want to talk with you, and we want to see where we're at." And this is all before, before kindergarten, pre-K. You know, when you think about students who, early on, have developmental delays, it, it might take a little bit to identify that. But if you can identify those things early on with each individual student and then see where they're at and where they need to be once getting to school, they'll have a better chance of getting the care that they need. You know, I know every one of us, none of us fit in this same little, little cookie-cutter ideal world. There's different needs, and you see that with people. Interviewing people, talking to people, and it's important to know, you first have to know where they're at before you can help them. You have to know, you have to know and understand that. If we can assess and have a better grip or a better way of assessing students before they get to school, I think we'll be able to better help them once we do get them in the school system.
All right. Mr. Combs kind of alluded to this a little while ago. With students nearing the return of in-person instruction, what are the top priorities in your mind regarding school safety practices and procedures? Maybe you can elaborate a little bit on that, Mr. Combs.
You know, through this COVID-19, which is really, really being terrible, but some good things have come out of this. And that is far as the fact that safety, you know, washing your hands, wearing your mask, social distancing, those kind of things. I think I said in one of our school board meetings a while back, when we were talking about going back to school, that we need to be more aware than ever when we go back because we're dealing with COVID-19 right now, but we're getting ready to hit the, the flu and the cold season. And we've got to be able to, be able to distinguish between those two because a lot of the symptoms for the flu are the same symptoms that you have in COVID-19. And we know that over the course of years, and we've seen this, that parents want to take their kids to school, whether they're sick or not. And we have stress to them that we've got to be safe. We've got to keep all of our kids safe. And if your kid is, is, is sick, please keep your kids home.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Steve has hit on the fundamentals there, that mask-wearing, the hand-washing, social distancing. We need to make sure that both our students and our school personnel are able to take those protective measures. I think some efforts have already been made, or at least were planned for when students come back, to make sure we have masks available for students who don't have them, to have replacement masks available for those that may get misplaced during the day. Everybody needs to be on board with those protocols. And I think that, I think it can be done safely. We also, I think, probably have to accept that, at least until we have an effective and widely-used vaccine, it's not going to be perfectly safe. We have to determine what's an acceptable level of risk. We also know the risk with not having kids in school. It's harder to make sure they get nutrition despite the heroic efforts the school system has made to address that need. It's hard to make sure, obviously, that they're getting the educational resources they need. In some cases, it's hard to make sure that they're getting just the basic needs met, that they're not being neglected. So there's a lot of elements to it, but the basics, I think, we will cover successfully because we've had some practice in doing it.
Mr. Cornet.
I think it will be, will, will require a reasonable approach or a common-sense approach. And that's one of the things being a pastor has taught me throughout this, throughout this time, is how, how hard it is to try to get everyone on the same page. But I think what we all need to do and understand, parents, students, teacher, teachers, is understand that we're responsible for ourself, accountable for ourself. And what I mean by that is if, if my student has symptoms, or if I've, if I've had symptoms, to not go. Like, one of the things at church, we're saying, "Look, you know, we're not going to church if you don't come to church. Stay at home. It's okay." You know, if you're, if you're sick, that's fine. Stay at home. And what we'll do is we'll offer, we'll have a CD for you, we'll do it online or what have you. And the same thing with the school system now. If we can get our infrastructure built up, I think it'll be a lot easier for even snow days. If the need arises for the older kids to be able to do something online, they can do that. But if you have symptoms, stay at home and really, honestly, just looking out for one another. That's what it comes down to. It's been, it's kind of tough. That's one of the things at church, to get a phone call that there's been maybe a potential contact at the church, and you kind of deal through that. And it goes back to the person who tests positive. They are the ones who identify who they have been around. And it's just, there's, there's nothing to be ashamed of. I mean, if you're sick, you're sick. But as the flu season comes on, everything's going to be looked at, is that the virus? And I think it is going to be challenging, but we are going to have to just be responsible enough to look out for one another that way.
Mr. Holstein.
Top priorities for reopening schools is to, we, we've all said it, the community has to take its part. And the schools can do the best they can and set up and establish the protocols within the schools because we're worried and make sure we want to take care of every single child that comes into that building. That's first and foremost. And to make sure that we're following those protocols and taking them all seriously. And we have an administration right now who takes them seriously. And I think that that's, that's number one, making sure that we have the people at the top, making sure they are taking it seriously. And I, from what, everything I've seen, that is being the case. Number two, we just have to set up to make sure that, you know, everyone's clear on what those protocols are, whether it be the faculty or the people who are entering schools, you know, where they're entering and what the protocol will be for temperature checks and those type things, you know, and making sure that we've established those. And so I think overall, just establishing that students understand those. So over time, it's going to take some understanding of those protocols and establish those. We're also going to have to recognize that we're not going to get it right every time, that we might make mistakes, but that if we all work together and understanding that if someone is feeling symptoms or sick or things like that, they're not worried about not coming to school. They're going to, they're going to be more concerned about the community. And so hopefully, we're going to take this as a community-wide approach, and the schools are doing an excellent job so far at that.
Yeah, every one of your answers touched on people somewhere along the way, and I think we can all agree that one of the silver linings of our community response to COVID has been the absolutely amazing work of the workforce of Watauga County schools, whether it's been delivering meals, delivering instruction in different ways, managing all of this, taking new responsibilities on. It has been one of our more inspirational stories for our entire community, and I know you all are equally proud of that. So my next question then centers around how you continue to get those great people. How will you help Watauga County schools continue to recruit, fund, and retain quality staff members to ensure the system continues to perform at a high level and remains also one of our community's most attractive selling points to families and businesses that may want to move here? We are to Mr. Ashcraft.
I think we are very fortunate in, in, in many areas, including specifically the issue you're raising, David, to have Dr. Elliott as our superintendent. I've never known a person that was more clearly attuned to building and maintaining good relationships. That matters a lot for attracting and retaining good people. We have an exceptional school system here. Part of that reputation feeds on itself, but it doesn't keep feeding on itself without getting some additional input from the top. And he sets a tone that is extremely healthy. People are respected. People are recognized. People feel listened to. It'd be wonderful if we could also compensate them in the way that they deserve. Most of that, of course, takes place at the state level, and we need to be a voice for better compensation. And Ronnie's mentioned the fact that we need to do that for school personnel, other than teachers as well, but across the board, we need to make sure that they are recognized financially. That's what other people expect for their work. They get a lot of intrinsic rewards, and we bless them for it and we're grateful for it. We also need to make sure they get financial compensation and the respect that makes them want to keep working hard for our students.
Mr. Cornet.
Recruiting absolutely is at the top of the list with that as well. That just made me think about Appalachian State when it used to be the Teaching Fellows. I remember back when I first started working at App, a lot of the students I met at that time were here on the Teaching Fellows. And I'd love to see something like that because there is a lot of partnerships that are, have been and will be, should be, maintained with Appalachian in the local school system. And I believe something like this would be good. You know, it might be the fact that you have one of the spouses that would get a job at Appalachian, and then the other spouse potentially a position in the school system, system. I know that's a, a local school system. I know that's common. But again, just as Mr. Ashcraft has said, too, community relationships is absolutely the key to it. Being able to appreciate what our motto is, the best place to work and learn in North Carolina, and I, I really buy into that. I believe in that. It's, and Dr. Elliott is paramount in the way he's presented that. He's, just like we were talking before coming in here, about how lucky we are to have him and his leadership here and his professionalism, and it just, it's contagious. It just goes through our school system. But also, you can't get past competitive pay, supplements, bonuses, anything that we can do or vote on or anything that we can achieve as a school board. I'm absolutely for that. And I do, I meant to say this at my opening, but I do want to thank our teachers for what is going on. One of our Parkway teachers lives next door to us, and so we still get to talk to her quite a bit about what's going on, where the rubber meets the road. And I remember she coming over and talking with us about what was going on when they first started, when there was going to the online classes and the challenges that would be. You know, you think, "Oh, that'll be simple. That'd be easy." But it, it's not. My goodness. All the work and everything that they've done, you cannot substitute the compassion that they've done. And I, I just want to thank them along those lines, since we're talking about that. Thank each of our, our teachers, our educators for what they're doing in our school system.
Mr. Holstein.
We do. We have some of the best faculty. We have some of the best staff and personnel, anybody from the, you know, any workings of the administration, all the way down to the personnel and staff who greet you coming in the front door. And, you know, they are, are top-notch, and we have to keep it that way. How do we retain that, first of all? So I think, number one, I think through compensation, you know, whatever's out there. Most of that's run by the state and dictated by the state. Unfortunately, we live in a very expensive area, and it doesn't seem to be getting any cheaper to live here. So I always advocate that we, we help support every personnel, staff, whether it be the janitor, people working in the, the, you know, cafeteria, all the way, the people, guidance counselors, and you name it. I think we should support them, number one. Number two, I think just having a system of listening. And we have garnered and, and, and kind of helped that along the way so that, that these individuals who work in the system feel heard in many ways. Now, sometimes we get challenged, right? COVID-19 is a challenge for a lot of those things, but feeling heard, I think, helps to, you know, breed, if you will, in some ways, that level of wanting to be here. And so I think our, our reputation precedes us, and I think that we will continue that way, and I hope so.
Mr. Combs.
This is one of those questions that I hated. I'm a light stone. Because I would have a lot to say on this. No, you know, I would piggyback on what Jason said down there, that, you know, with Dr. Elliott being our superintendent, he has done a fantastic job working with the Chamber, working with the university, working with Colwell. And one of our assets is the fact that we have Appalachian State University here, which puts out some of the best teachers in, in North Carolina. And we have students that want to stay here. And we go to the job fairs. We recruit these people. And one of the things going for us is the fact that we have a small school system. We're not a great big school system like Charlotte Mecklenburg or, or Raleigh or Durham or somewhere. And people want to stay here because we have the things they're looking for. They want to raise their families here because our crime rate's low, we have a great school system, we have a great hospital system, and we have all the things that they need to be able to succeed right here in, in Watauga County. And that should make each one of us proud that we live in a community that, that supports each other and does the things that it does each and every day.
We'll start off with Mr. Cornet next. As an outside observer, what has our school system learned about disruption planning?
Disruption planning? Well, really, you've got to identify the problems that you have. And that's one of the things, as we were talking about this, I know it's kind of obviously centered around COVID-19, but if it's not COVID-19, it could be something else. So in preparation, it's, it's basically, you've got to identify your, your weakest points and work to correct those. Right now, we're talking a lot about infrastructure, making sure that each student has the same opportunity as the student beside of them, experiencing what they have in the classroom versus what they experience at home, and people are at different places. So really, I think what we need to do is be wise in planning on what our issues are. Right now, also, we're talking about building our next school. I know that that is one of the forefronts of what we're talking about as well. But just being able to identify quickly, effectively, what our issues are going to be, and then move to, to create a solution on those. That's, that's, because if it's not the virus, it will be something else. That's just, that's how life is. That's the way it is in law enforcement, education, everything. It's just how it works.
Mr. Holstein.
Unfortunately, the question has answers that I'm, I'm afraid the Board of Education is probably not going to be able to fix, other than maybe through advocacy or maybe through providing of data and access to information for larger corporations and things like providing of data and access to information for larger corporations and things like that. But one of the things that we, we lack in right now, and we've talked about it, many of us all night, is the lack of connectivity in our school, in our, in our homes. You know, many kids, or even teachers for that matter, can't really do much work at home because they're not connected to the internet. And if they do, they, they don't have data plans that are going to support them to be able to do that. But I think as a school system, we have to be prepared for this to happen again. It, it might not be a pandemic. It could be a weather-related emergency or situation. You know, that, that, that could be a lot longer-term, you know, fixing, whether it be flooding or things like that, that we might have to worry about. And so we have to be prepared in some ways with our infrastructure. And number two, the other thing I think we have to understand is that we have a community hurting right now. A lot of the schools shut down abruptly in March, and we recognize that the, when the people went home, there was a lot of jobs lost, there was a lot of pain felt, the, the families in the homes were, were hurting. We've seen mental health crisis increase, we've seen suicide increase, we've seen, seen things like that. And although the schools can't fix that problem, we have to recognize, how are we a part of the solution to that problem? And that is going to be a long-term solution that communities and states and regions will be dealing with for a long time.
Mr. Combs.
That question is a very good question, whether it's COVID-19, as they said, or something else. It all comes down to be able to communicate with one another, identifying problems, even maybe doing something such as a roundtable discussion on this issue to be able to solve it. And the one thing that I always try to do, and I always remember, and it's something my mom taught me years and years ago, is that we need to treat each, everybody with respect and with love. And when somebody's suffering, you know, it's kind of like out in my community, when somebody's suffering or having a hard time, we go to them and see what it takes to help them fix their problems. And that's what it is in his community. If someone's suffering, we need to go help them.
Mr. Ashcraft.
A lot of learning, of course, is really relearning. We've learned once again that you cannot anticipate the next crisis, but we can anticipate there will be one. Another thing we have relearned is that with a lot of commitment and resourcefulness, flexibility, adaptability, creativity, some enormous obstacles can be overcome. And I think we owe, as has been already mentioned, a huge thanks to our teachers and school personnel for all they have done to try to cope with the situation. So we're reminded once again of what a blessing we have in the personnel of our school system, and how while they cannot cure every problem, they can address any issue with a combination qualities that will make us very proud and that will give us the confidence that we can cope. We can't fix it, but we can cope, we can improve, we can move forward.
We've got two final questions for you before we give you your, your two-minute wrap-up time, so we're, we're coming down the home stretch here. I know that this next question will, will lend us all to think COVID, but I, I ask you to think beyond just COVID-19 for the answer to this. Based on what we've experienced here, certainly in the last year, but then other situations as well, what ways do you see yourself as an elected official here in our community supporting a healthy community? And, and what will you do to support public health efforts that help the school system maintain its own healthy community? Mr. Holstey.
When I think about how we can move forward from anything like this and learn, part of what I understand and what I think we, I can bring that might be a little unique is a level of compassion. Steve mentioned just a minute ago with that former question, but when I think about compassion and understanding that every person comes at it from a different place, everybody sees it in a different way, they're experiencing the pain or hurt or suffering or perhaps joys in, in different things. And so being able to understand and relate with those people and not try to understand them in a way that, you know, you're going to try and solve a problem or anything else, but just, just be present, to be accessible for those individuals. And I think schools are often very much the center point for our communities in this area. And I think schools in understanding and bringing to the table this level of compassion and understanding. So I think as far as that goes, is just being able to build and understand and listen to it in multiple different ways, as opposed to just the one way in which you might see it, the one lens you might see that through. So that would be my, my one way.
Mr. Combs.
One of the things that I'm proud of, especially with our superintendent we have now, that is the fact that I have the opportunity to, and I do at some point during every day, he talks to us, school board members. When we have school board meetings here, he's been bringing in our health lady, Jan Green. One of the things that I am very, very proud of, the fact that when I get questions, and let me tell you, I get questions every single day. I get a little slew of questions. But the, the good thing is I know who to turn to as a school board member to get the answers that people want. I try to hook people up with people, with the people that can do, can do things for them. And as long as I can do that, you know, and as long as I have the information, I want to be there for people. I want people, if you have a, if you have a question, or you, or you don't understand something, call me, and if I can't find the answer, I'll get you in touch with somebody that can.
Mr. Ashcraft.
One key element, of course, is just modeling. Teachers are very familiar with that, but we want to make sure that in our health practices within the schools, we model good standards of behavior, that we model healthy attitudes, that we encourage vaccination, for example. And another way in which we need to do it is to make sure we have a means, which we, we do a lot already, but can hopefully do even more, to make sure people know the connections they need to make for public health resources. The school system can't, can't do it all on that front, but we need to make sure people know how to access the health department, hospitals, physicians, what kind of supplemental coverage is available for people who don't have private health insurance. We need to try to be helpful in making families, helping families make those connections to get the services they need.
Mr. Cornet.
Good question, and I'm kind of excited about kind of giving a plug here to kind of answer this, but when you think about it, it's about relationships because we all interact, we have different professions, and we interact with people for different reasons, but we learn resources. We know where to find resources. One of the things I do on campus is serve on Staff Senate, and we get to, and I say get to, me and my wife, but different ones on campus, is for full-time employees get to take part in what's called App Kids. And what we do as employees, we get to volunteer to take these kids shopping during the Christmas season, holiday season. But you get to see firsthand what these, what these students need. And it's not just local employees of Appalachian, it's folks that have moved here who currently work at Appalachian, so they may not know the community, but you get to know the community. And if, if you've got someone that works, maybe has a medical background, or has a question, or, or has knowledge here, they might be able to answer a question for someone. I love what we get to do with App Kids. You get to go in, it makes me think about when I served at the Watauga Sheriff's Office, you get to go out into the community, you get to see what these kids are going through, what our Watauga County School kids go through. With App Kids, that's who it's for. It's the Watauga County School kids, so you see that partnership there. You see the partnership we have with Watauga County Schools, Caldwell, App. You see how it also goes into our medical professionals, and you also see how it goes into our law enforcement community. So it pulls everything in. That's one of the things I learned early on in my career. It's, I'm, I'm not going to know everything, I'm not going to remember everything, but knowing where to look. And if you have that many different relationships, our, our ability to be more successful in a healthy community is just going to be that much stronger.
The Boone and Blowing Rock Chambers are basically designed to help grow and enhance the business community. And so the question I have is, how do you feel the school system can directly benefit the business community? And conversely, how can the business community directly impact the school system? Mr. Combs.
By working together. One of the things that I'm very, very proud of is our relationship with Blowing Rock Chamber and with the Boone Chamber, the fact that we stress that people need to be able to shop local. We remind people that, we send stuff home with people to let them know, you know, we need to support our businesses in our community by continuing to lay down relationships with all the other businesses in our community. You know, we have the Education Foundation, which I'm very, very proud of, and it's made up of business people and people from the community, and they lay framework down and they give support to our teachers. But it's all about connectivity and being able to, to work together.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Well, first, I'll give a little shout-out to the, to the role the Chamber has played in promoting education. It has for a long time made education one of its key priorities in its activities, aside from its direct involvement in the school system. That is very valuable, and it sends a message that's useful not only in recruiting businesses, but in making our education personnel feel appreciated and recognized. So that's, thank you for that. In terms of what the school system can do for the business community, I think making sure that all students know that they need to and can succeed in post-secondary education is a key role. On a slightly more tangible level, we can continue to support, as we do already, expanded opportunities for career, career and technical education, which are the envy of most schools in the state. Our high school is a leader in doing that. Those, those are, you know, we need to recognize the fact that not every student needs or wants to go to a four-year university. And it's a great thing to acquire skill that prepares you to succeed at the next level that's, that's not a university level. And then the business community is giving back to us, we need to continue to part with them on internships. They donate tools and equipment to a lot of our programs at the high school, and they, they advocate for more involvement in that, they help us make students aware of the opportunities that are out there for them. So we've got great partnerships, we just need to continue to build on those.
Mr. Cornet.
Absolutely. Thinking about the Watauga Innovation Academy and thinking about the different trade opportunities that are created there. Noah's went to do, when I was on the Teacher of the Year Committee, Mr. Wilson, got to talk to him and Mr. Ward in the welding department and see firsthand what they do there. And what they were so proud of is what they could do with these students in two years or through the academy, and then they could absolutely enter into a, a, a good money-making trade. He said, he, he was telling me, when he was talking about it, and his, his eyes were just sparkling, he said, Jason, he said, these students are going out making tons of money right out of the gate and then putting themselves through college. I mean, I think that's just an amazing thing. So being able to work through, work through the trade community, Caldwell, and even law enforcement, some of those things, what a person is interested in doing. And then I think it would be neat also to absolutely identify potential internships and say, hey, are you wanting to do this temporary? Is this a full-time career? And I think the Chamber's instrumental in being able to do that, working with local businesses and someone wanting to be an accountant or CPA or what have you, be able to identify that, hey, I know, I know who to put you with, so you can try that out and see what you think before maybe even going into it full-time. But I think there's a lot of opportunities identified that way.
Mr. Holstey.
Yeah, this is very important. I think education is probably the most critical piece to an economic development of any community. I think that having a strong education system, as we do here, has brought forth fruit and will continue to bear fruit. As we have an educated society, I think it's extremely important that communities see that and that businesses see that, and they come, and innovation is bred from that, and I think that's extremely critical. So number one, I think that the school's relationship with the community is to be a part of the process of making an economic viable, you know, living, wonderful area to, to bring your business and everything that, that comes with that, whether it be for the students and families and communities and parents and all those. But I think the relationship is reciprocal, of course. It's, it's one of those things that our community has already provided so well for our students, whether it be in supports of names and, you know, giving awards and all the many things that they do, or grant opportunities that they've been able to do. So seeing that relationship and seeing how they duly respect each other, I think it would be great to see the model of maybe a community college who allows students to go and, like you said, either an internship or literally, you know, working with a business to learn more about that. And my closing is going to deal with the Innovation Academy, because that's wonderful.
Well, we, we won't, we won't keep you guys from it, just know that you all are keeping Omar and Tracy and I from dinner, so make it quick. No, I'm just kidding. Two minutes to, to wrap up your thoughts here. Appreciate all of you for, for coming out and, and being a part of this. I think it's, it's fantastic to know that you all have thought very well about your answers and, and you're all positioned very well to, to help lead the school system. So we thank you for your dedication to put your name on the ballot to begin with. So with that said, two minutes and closing thoughts. Mr. Ashcraft, we'll start with you.
Again, thank you very much for hosting this. I know a lot of labor goes into making it happen, and we don't see all of that here, but we appreciate it. I also want to thank my fellow candidates. Every one of these people seated beside me is a person that is dedicated to education and to public service. Most of you have served that way in some role. I think the community will be well-served by any combination of folks that they choose to elect from this group up here. I'm not going to try to cover a lot of nitty-gritty of education because we try to do that with our questions. Instead, I'm going to summarize some of the qualities I think are most important in leadership and which I would hope to be able to add to as a board member. Honesty, integrity is at the top of the list. If you don't deserve to be trusted, you do not deserve to lead. A strong sense of responsibility and a work ethic to put in the time and effort necessary to master the issues and to be able to respond to people. A willingness to listen and to learn and to honestly admit a mistake and to correct it. Sometimes that will go a little bit further. If things get heated, you need to be able to give and accept forgiveness. And you need to be able to respect others and those who have different opinions, those who have, in some cases, different values. We've built a great educational system. The most important element of maintaining that is going to be building strong relationships. So we need to honor these values in order to do that and succeed for our students.
Mr. Cornet.
All right. Omar, David, thank you so much for having us. I do appreciate that. Thank you for those that are, have hung on this long to listen to us tonight, and I do want to thank everyone that is and does take part of the Watauga County School System. I'm a product of that system as a 1994 graduate of Watauga High School and I, again, from the Bethel community. But I did want to read this part here. I normally don't read, I like to speak from the heart, but this is something that I wrote from the heart, but, so I wanted to read this. "I previously served on the Watauga County Board of Education for, for years from 2014 to 2018. I was assigned to several committees, including school safety, the Watauga Education Foundation. I got to do a lot of fun things, even with Tracy, the flapjack flip, the shooting stars. I, I love all of that. I mean, that is so much fun. Flipping pancakes that morning, waiting for the Christmas parade, I, I tell you, I love that. I mean, that is one of my favorite things to do. Being also on the Teacher of the Year Committee, being able to see that firsthand, student services and other responsibilities. Between being an investigator and a board member, I have solid, solid experience in solving problem, problems. It takes people willing to work together and oft, often thinking outside the box. I do find being a school board member to be less political and more practical. It's, it's a job, it's a work, and it's for our kids. I mean, what else is more important? I think that's why they saved this for the last, because it's the main event. I mean, we work with the future of tomorrow. I mean, come on now, that's, this is the main event. But I do find it less political, more practical. Also, focusing on the needs of our students, our staff and faculty. I count it an honor to serve our school system by working together with other board members, along with other local and state government officials. And just to echo what Mr. Ashcraft said, I do appreciate your willingness to serve and be here. I, I'd work with any of you, and I appreciate you guys being here, and I do thank you for your time."
Mr. Holstey.
Public education is the most important, I think, in any community. When I look at public education and when I decided I was wanting to serve in some capacity, this was the place. Public education was where I felt like I needed to be. It was for the students, my children, maybe starts there, but it, of course, breeds to everybody else and their kids and the love and the passion for that. All kids are different. They're very different. I, I teach at Caldwell Community College, and, you know, early on in my career, or my life, if you will, I wasn't sure college was for me. I was pretty certain it was not going to be for me. But a community college was there for me, and it supported me. And I think that we should understand that not every kid, when they leave, is going to have a full grasp on what they want. And I think we have the options of the Innovation Academy and other things that really give kids the opportunity to lead in a community without, you know, this hassle of thinking, I've got this brunt of a four-year degree coming or, you know, six years after that or whatever for being able to lead. And so I, I just see the school system as so important in understanding that these kids are just coming from varying different ways. And as a community college instructor, I see it as a viable option for students to, to leave and leave high school leading in their community. So that's, that's my number-one thing for me that I wanted to make sure I put out there. But the number-two is I've just got a passion for education. Even though I didn't think it was going to be for me, you know, there was a myriad of things that took place, and it happened in education that took me there. And life teaches us a lot of interesting things, even if we're not trying to make it happen. So first of all, I'm Ronnie Holstey. I just want to come and be present within the schools, and I'm asking for your vote in November.
Thank you. Mr. Combs.
You know, I'm a, I'm a whole lot biased about being a school board member. A friend of mine, many, many, many years ago, at one of these forums, made a statement. His name was Lowell Yance. All of us know Lowell. Lowell says, "This is the most important job." Lowell says, this is the most important job in the state of North Carolina, but we are always lax when it comes time for forums. And I thought about that, he said, listen to me a minute, he says, we handle the most important commodity in the county. We handle the safety, the well-being, the future of every single kid in Wetaga County. And to be able to do that, he says, you must have a passion for education. Well, I thought about that and I said, you know, he's absolutely right. And for me, I've been on this board for 14 years and I still have a burning fire inside for education. I want to create positive avenues for kids. I want to be there when that parent is upset and needs someone to talk to. I want to be that avenue. I want to be able to get them in touch with somebody that can make education a positive difference. Way back when I got on the board, we weren't really as into our tech program as we are now. I helped get that going. I'm proud of that. I had a daughter that came through there and got a degree. My daughter, Victoria, has got a two-year degree in welding. She could go out and make big money using her welding degree right now. I'm proud of that. But the most important thing that I'm proud of is the fact that people have confidence in me, that they trust me with the most important thing in their life, and that's their kids. And when you go to vote on November the 3rd or whenever you vote, if you want someone that's got experience, that really deeply down inside cares about your kids, I'm your man.
Well, thank you all for your time here this evening. We wish you all nothing but the best and who knows, maybe Mr. Combs, maybe we'll flip the coin and school board will be first next time.
Thank you.
All right. That will just about do it for us. One thing that we wanted to show you real quick, once again, just before we leave, is to show you that information on voting again and make sure that you do have those dates available to you and understand when those deadlines are. You see October 9th, when voter registration closes, the 15th, one-stop early voting begins here in Wetaga County. It closes on the 31st and then, of course, November 3rd being Election Day. Precinct polls open from 6:30 in the morning till 7:30 in the evening. You've got all kinds of ways to vote and hopefully you'll be able to now take some informed decisions forward and be able to pull that lever with some confidence after what you've heard tonight.
On behalf of Spectrum and the Boone and Blowing Rock Chambers, I want to say thank you to all the candidates who participated tonight. As we mentioned before, it takes a lot of courage, a lot of self-confidence and a lot of time to not only go out and ask people to vote for you, but then if you win, to keep going and working hard at it for that two- or four-year period. So again, we want to say thank you and I'm glad that Spectrum was a part of this.
A few final thank yous for you, to our crew here at the theater, everybody that's been working, from the theater staff to App TV, the Chamber volunteers, the Chamber staffs, and everybody in between. Tracy Royster didn't have to issue one traffic ticket tonight. She came close a couple of times, but we certainly appreciate Tracy for doing what is the most thankless job in this whole process, and that's telling people when to be quiet. So we will be quiet now. We thank all of our media partners, again, App TV and Spectrum certainly for serving as the sponsor, but also to High Country Radio for making sure that as many people could get this as possible. We thank you for that. We'll be posting archives of this entire show here over several different platforms over the next couple of days. Audio archives that you can take as a podcast. App TV will be repurposing the video from this. So you've got an opportunity to go back and really study and think about who you want to vote for and we encourage you to do that. So on behalf of Omar Tomlinson and everybody here that made this possible tonight, on behalf of the Appalachian Theater team who opened their doors for us here on this beautiful Thursday, we thank you for watching the 2020 Wetaga County Meet the Candidates Forum, presented by the Boone Area and Blowing Rock Chambers of Commerce and brought to you by Spectrum. Good night, everybody.